Okay, well, good evening and thank you for attending our emergency town hall on privatization of our hospital services and both surgical and diagnostic this evening. We are very much engaged in this process and we do have a couple of wonderful and inspiring speakers today. That's Natalie Mara on the screen and Angela Preo Cannon from the ONA on the screen. I'll start with just a few opening remarks and then I'll be will get right into the first presentation. And I'll give a little bit more detailed introduction on both of our speakers as we as we proceed. So everyone, what we're doing this for is because we are really very much afraid of this unprecedented crisis in our hospitals. So we're holding these emergency town halls all across the province. This is one of many. And you've probably heard through, you know, media that even our pediatric hospitals are in a massive crisis. An unprecedented crisis, even in pediatric hospitals. And of course, that's been ongoing for met for for many years, actually. Right here with our community hospitals in Waterloo region. Ron Gagnon in 2020 went around and spoke with every one of the local MPPs here in the region of Waterloo, telling them that the hospital, the Grand River Hospital in particular, had been at over over capacity every single day for a year. And that's just worse than so we do have this unprecedented issue. We are very much worried about our reading of this situation. The Ford government seems very, very serious about how they're going to privatize our public hospital by removing our surgical and diagnostic procedures that are currently in the outpatient and inpatient clinics in our hospitals and and transfer them to independent health facilities. That's the buzzword or the euphemism for for-profit private clinics. We do not support that at all. And as as everyone else in the province thinks, we we need to consider how we're going to stop this level of privatization. And how are we going to actually support and protect our public healthcare system and our public hospitals in particular? So before I turn it over to our first speaker Natalie, I'd just like to give you a little story about what happened here locally in March of 2020 this year. In March of 2020, we spoke to all of the media locally, including the record. We got front page, you know, response from the record about this transfer of surgical and diagnostic procedures to independent health facilities. So the record then spoke with the Ford government in March and said, you know, this is what we were saying. And the response, and I'll have to read it to you because I want to get it verbatim from Mr. Elliot, that was the Minister of Health at the time, Press Secretary Alexandra Hilton. And she said that these claims are categorically false. To be clear, the government is committed to supporting the province's public healthcare system. The use or function of private hospitals and independent health facilities in Ontario is not being expanded or changed. Recently, what we found out from the Financial Accountability Office, that's the body that monitors spending at Queen's Park, is that the Ford government doubled the amount of money that they were spending on independent health facilities in January, February and March of this year. So they outright outright lied. They denied that they had a plan for moving these services out. And and this wasn't no insignificant amount of financial transfer. By doubling the the payments to independent health facilities in March of this year, what they did was they now increased it by over thirteen point six million dollars. So twenty six million dollars in one quarter. And if they continue with that kind of unprecedented spending on independent health facilities, so that they can transfer our diagnostics, our surgeries to these for-profit clinics. Then we're going to be looking at a hundred million dollars in a in a financial year. A hundred million dollars going from the hospitals into independent health facilities. And we don't think we could tolerate that. We also don't believe that it's correct for our government to tell us one thing just before the election. And then just two months after the election, do a complete U-turn and then start funding these hospitals and telling us that they're going to find creative ways to transfer all our services to for-profit private clinics. So if that continues to happen, we're going to face a tragic consequences when it comes to our hospital. And I know that both Natalie and Mayor and Angela will be able to elicit more detail for you on that. So with that said, I'm going to introduce our first speaker. And after our speakers, we'll have a question and answer period first for the media. And then for anybody who's participating tonight in our town hall. And again, thank you for being here. We absolutely need you. And we'll talk about some other, you know, measures that we can take to ensure that we do not lose our public hospitals. So Natalie Mara is our first speaker. She's the Executive Director of the Ontario Health Coalition. And she's been in that role for 22 years. And she's built the interest group of on healthcare in the province that represents more than three quarters of a million Ontarians. It's it's got a network of over 500 member organizations. We're one of them at Waterloo Region Health Coalition, obviously. And she spearheaded numerous national campaigns to safeguard and improve single-tier health, uh, single-tier public Medicare. She's a contributing author to books on healthcare policy, privatization, building the movement to protect public healthcare. She's written hundreds of articles, reports and submissions. She's testified regularly before the legislative committees and has featured in hundred and has featured in hundreds of media interviews on healthcare. She's an inspirational leader and who I have learned from every single day I've been involved with the Health Coalition here in Waterloo. Thank you Natalie for that and I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, thanks Jim. I'm really moved by that. Thanks for that. I I feel very lucky that we have Jim, uh, who's chairing the Waterloo Health Coalition. Because he's, yeah, people are applauding. Good. Because he's so intelligent and just so capable. And really just a wonderful person. And he certainly puts up with us and we're always trying to do more than we can possibly do. Uh, and and so thank you, Jim, from the bottom of my heart for working with us, for continuing to carry the torch for these years and for being such a leader and a hero in your community. And also to the members of the Waterloo Health Coalition, look at you all here. There's like, what is there 90, just about 90 people at this point on the on the call tonight. Anyway, thank you very, very much. I wanted to start by, um, by by saying that, you know, this has been a really, really trying period. We all, I think, thought the pandemic would be over and it just, you know, seems to carry on, carry on. And if you're not really working in healthcare or in healthcare, you don't necessarily see the extent of the pandemic or its consequences. But boy, it's brutal. It's relentless. And it really has taken a terrible toll on people. We've been talking about a crisis and we, you know, we chose our words really carefully leading into the pandemic. Because we didn't want to be alarmist and we didn't want to be turned, you know, zoned out and turned off by overusing the word crisis, you know? So only when things were like so bad that they had people, you know, one of our members in Sudbury, uh, you know, on a on a, um, a gurney in a bathroom in the Sudbury Hospital for, I think, 13 days or something, you know, at that point, we started to use the word crisis for what was going on. That was leading into the pandemic. I don't even have words to describe the situation now. None of us who have been working in health policy or advocacy or as healthcare workers have ever seen anything like this. It just is, it is truly unprecedented. I want to share with you a story. This is from a mom of a child who has disabilities. And so the mom is used to, you know, having to deal with complex medical problems with her daughter. Uh, but this is what happened to her. Now, when was this? About a week and a half ago. Uh, my family lived this nightmare when my six-year-old daughter was rushed to hospital barely breathing last week. Now that she's out of hospital and my cortisol levels are down a bit, I can share our experience and some questions I'm asking. When we arrived at emergency, families were overflowing in the waiting room from the waiting room into the parking lot. Security guards were tasked with maintaining order. I elbowed my way in and was immediately seen due to how acute my daughter's illness was. Kids who weren't so sick, they needed the hospital to keep them breathing, faced up to a 14-hour wait to see a doctor at one point. There simply was not enough staff. I witnessed a three-year-old with a bleeding laceration on her forehead being turned away from the hospital. A couple of kids showed up who required all of the emergency staff to keep them alive. The triage nurse explained to the waiting room that their wait would be longer. Parents were irate. A mother screamed at the nurse. Security intervened to protect the nurse from two fathers. During this period, there were no staff available to monitor my daughter. It was up to me to monitor her oxygen levels and to administer oxygen and ventilin. The triage nurse did her best to check each kid who arrived, but it was impossible. She did simply did not have the resources and tools she needed. She kept her cool and did her job skillfully and empathetically despite abuse from stressed-out parents. I left her a love letter. Eventually, my daughter received the IV and lung X-ray she needed. We were admitted into acute care where we spent three nights with excellent care. She played soccer this weekend without ventilin, so she's back to normal. It will take me longer to recover. I'm left with a whole host of questions. And then she goes on to ask her questions. The first of which is, how can we expect people to work 12-hour shifts under that kind of stress and not burn out or leave nursing? I would have lasted approximately five minutes in that job. And it's just the beginning of the flu and virus season. This is year three of the healthcare crisis. There are not enough health staff and those left are burnt out and working sick often. What is the game plan? We can't expect these people to prop up the system forever at the expense of their own mental and physical health. How can we be kinder with each other? I get that having a sick kid in emergency at 3:00 AM who can't see a doctor is awful, but I was horrified by the behavior of some parents. Why is the vaccination rate for under 12 so low, et cetera, et cetera? And then she goes on. We are hearing these stories from parents of sick kids, from adults who try to access the emergency departments in their hospitals. It's across the board. It's new be in the pediatric hospitals. But it has been like this in the adult hospitals for a long time. It's worse though now. It really is. Um, from the summer into the fall, almost 100 local emergency departments closed temporarily due to staffing shortages. ICUs closed for weeks at a time due to staffing shortages. When you think of a hospital, what more urgent level of care is there than emergency care or critical care units, intensive care units? There's nothing. The minister said in the summer, oh, there isn't a crisis and that it wasn't unprecedented. That was an outright lie. In fact, we have never had uh, emergency departments and ICUs, birthing units and so on, closing across Ontario due to staffing shortages like like we saw last summer occasionally. But it was big news when it happened. We've seen an emerge close temporarily overnight like Seaforth did, you know, 10 years ago or something. But I'm telling you, it was that rare. You know, it was has never been like this at all. It is unprecedented. It is a crisis. The fact that the minister won't say so is completely bizarre. I don't know what it serves. I don't know if she believes it. I don't know if it's some communications line given to them by their PR people, but it's just completely bizarre at this point. The fact is that we are in trouble. And I don't know how we're going to get through this winter unless we force the government to do something about it. And the Ford government really has been intransigent. This isn't all of their creation, as I think many of you know, Ontario now has the fewest hospital beds left of any province in the country. And we're almost at the bottom of the entire OECD. So every developed nation on earth, um, you know, I think it's only Mexico and Chile who have fewer hospital beds left than we do. Ontario has pursued the most radical hospital downsizing program of virtually anywhere in the world. Why? Well, partly to save money, mostly to fund tax cuts for the wealthy and for corporations. Because, you know, that's who tax cuts benefit. Um, but also, um, to privatize. Every service that's cut from public hospitals is privatized. You know, they move people out into long-term care. They privatize long-term care. They move people out into home care. They privatized home care. They move services out into clinics and so on. They privatize the clinics. I mean, there's a whole lineup of of private for-profit companies that want to make money out of the billions of dollars that we spend on our local public hospitals every year. Um, and and governments have been all too willing to hand it over to them at the expense of having, um, you know, coherent hospital plan, having hospitals that can provide the services that our local um, communities need. So it's two forces. One, cut funding in order to transfer money back to the wealthy and to corporations and privatize. The Ford government has just steadfastly refused to do anything about the hospital crisis. The media is complaining to me that every time they do an emergency room overwhelm, you know, story, that they get the same speaking notes from the minister. She says, um, we're hiring 6,000 staff, yada, yada, yada. The status quo is not acceptable. Seriously. Well, we need about 56,000 staff in long-term care alone. We need about 40,000 in our hospitals. Uh, and and so 6,000 staff, which I don't know if they've actually hired them. Um, but if they have, uh, what we're seeing is actually a net loss of staff. So more are leaving than are actually being hired in. And you can't just hire willy-nilly like that. At this point, staffing shortages are so bad that the staffing shortages beget staffing shortages. If you're working under so much pressure every shift, you know, you cannot possibly observe everyone. Every time you're home and off, you're being called in for overtime. You feel like you're letting your colleagues down when you can't go in because um, you know that they're working overstretched. The workloads are impossible. And people are verbally abusive and violent with you when you go to work. And people get hurt in large numbers in healthcare these days. And 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 so, you know, you can't just hire in a few people here and there. What we need to do is what Quebec did after the first wave of the pandemic where they hired in, they aim to hire in 10,000 PSWs and long-term care, this is, all in one go, right? So they recruited them. They paid them $21 an hour for training. They increased their pay. Once they got into the homes, they actually got 7,000 and some odd of them. They did their intensive training over three months and they got them into the homes in time for the second wave of the pandemic. They had a far better second wave. We had a far worse second wave. The government refused to do that and continues to refuse to do that. That would help staff long-term care, home care, um, uh, complex continuing care beds in hospitals. Nurses take longer to train, right? So that's not going to work for nurses. What the only thing that's going to work is to recruit back the nurses who retired out early. The nurses who've left voted with their feet and left for burnout. And that's going to mean that they need to address the working conditions that are creating the crisis. That means they need to have guaranteed nurse staffing ratios so that that they're they don't have an impossible workload. They need to have some control over their hours. Bill 124, which is the bill that actually is suppressing their wages. They're in wage suppression. Can you believe this? In this context, with a severe shortage in the middle of a pandemic, after they've all risked their lives for three years for all of us, uh, you know, on top of the normal risking of their lives for all of us, uh, to to have the indignity, you know, the fork in in the eye of a wage suppression legislation is just unbelievable. And the Ford government has been intransigent on that. And so there are concrete measures that could be done if they wanted to, to address the crisis. But they will would not admit that there's a crisis and they won't address it. And then the flip side of the same coin, they're privatizing. So let the crisis go, part in which the Ford government was actually instrumental. It's not all their fault by any means, but when they got into office, they brought in hospital cuts. They brought in a real dollar cuts to hospitals and long-term care. Then they cut public health and EMS. They tried to do this whole restructuring and then the pandemic hit. So they were a big part of creating this and certainly their wage suppression legislation and so on is is creating a lot of harm. Um, so you know, create a crisis in the public hospitals or at least let the crisis roll on unabated and then privatize. And that's what we're seeing. And as Jim said, in the spring, they doubled the funding to the for-profit clinics. They lied in the lead into the election and said categorically that they weren't increasing or expanding the private clinics, even as they were doubling the funding to them. We don't often say someone lied outright. They lied outright. I mean, there's just no way around it. They lied in your newspaper about it. I think that's outrageous and it should be news, you know, frankly, because what kind of democracy do we have? If people can lie about what they're going to do and they or what they're actually doing, uh, leading into an election. And then two months after the election, they actually announced that they're planning to privatize the hospitals um, and take the surgeries and it'll be the profitable, obviously surgeries and the diagnostics out of the local public hospitals, leaving all the unprofitable ones behind with less staff um, and less funding to provide for them. I'm just going to end with this. Most communities like yours across Ontario have spent the last hundred years building your local hospitals, you know, donating through payroll deductions, volunteering, literally building up the local hospitals to have those services close to home and comprehensive, good quality services in our communities. People of every political stripe have been involved in that. It's deep in this province. It matters. And what the Ford government is doing is the dismantling of that hundred-plus years of effort in our communities. And we cannot let him do that. When we fight, we win. We've stopped privatization repeatedly under different governments um, in Ontario. We've saved local hospitals from closures, local emergency departments in oh, places like Wallaceburg and, um, uh, St. Joe's Island and the birthing unit in Midland and, um, the hospitals, the entire hospitals in Port Colborne and Fort Erie and, you know, all across Ontario, we've stopped them from cutting services. We've saved hospitals. We've kept them open. We've expanded services in some places and we've stopped privatization. When we fight, but there is no one else to do it. I mean, there's, it's going to be the regular people who built the local hospitals across Ontario who now have to defend them from what we think is the most serious threat to them that I have seen. You know, at least since the Harris government, if not in my lifetime. So anyway, thank you very, very much for being here. I'm looking forward to working with you on this. I know we can do it. Uh, and I guess I'll just end with this. Ralph Klein, do you remember him? Anyone remember Ralph Klein? Some people do. So he was the Premier of Alberta back in the late 1990s when Mike Harris was the Premier in Ontario. And these were the first governments in the history of Canada, actually, that were really radical cut cutting governments, right? It was the first time that we had these governments that wanted to, you know, empty, you know, give massive tax cuts to the wealthy and corporations and then say, oh, the cupboard is empty. Oh, my goodness, we have to cut and privatize and so on. And Ralph Klein came in and Mike Harris came in in Ontario. And Ralph Klein blew up. Actually, he imploded the Calgary Hospital. There's a video of it online. If you want to go see, and it was this kind of macho thing, like he was bringing this right-wing revolution, right, to Alberta? So he imploded the big hospital in Calgary. And and then ultimately, he faced this massive fight back. They privatized the MRI and CT clinics in Alberta. And the Friends of Medicare there are, which is our sister organization, they got thousands of patients to keep their bills. Um, they brought their bills. They took it on a complaint to the federal government. They ultimately forced the Klein government to pay back every single patient that had been charged for an MRI in a private clinic. And then they republizied the MRIs and CTs under the Ralph Klein government. Anyway, Shirley Douglas, whose father was Tommy Douglas, and as some of you would know, she, um, they held a big protest at the Alberta Legislature when he was trying to bring in this legislation to privatize healthcare. And they filled the galleries. I remember that on the TV, there are people hanging from the banisters in the gallery, in the galleries of the legislature. And she describes it. She says, you know, you could, you you could stand in because the prairie is really flat. You could see the line of cars stretching across the ferry, across the prairie as far as you could see. People trying to get to the legislature to protest the privatization of their healthcare services in Alberta. She said it was amazing. And in the end, Ralph Klein said that public healthcare was the electric third rail of Canadian politics. You know, in the railway, you've got the two rails, the train goes down and then the third rail that carries the electricity and you dare not touch it because you'll get electrocuted. And I loved that. I thought, you know, let them be afraid to touch our public healthcare. And I feel it's our job to electrify that third rail. Let's go do it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Natalie. That was very inspirational again from you, as expected. And just to reiterate and sort of illustrate some of the points that you made there. I attended, uh, I was invited to attend a meeting that Catherine Fait, a local MPP, held last Monday and her office is talking about week after week of daily calls of people who are complaining that they can't get the surgical services that they need in this region, that they are on wait lists but are also offered alternatives in different private for-profit clinics that they can't afford. So this is an ongoing crisis that we are seeing locally. With respect to beds, the one thing I can say to illustrate how few beds we have in Ontario, but primarily right here in the region of Waterloo, is that we did some initial research in and in 2020 on how many beds we have here in the region of Waterloo. And do you know that in 1961, 62, that fiscal year, we had 937 beds in the three major hospitals in the regional Waterloo Grand River Hospital, then called KW General, St. Mary's Hospital and Cambridge Memorial Hospital. And they serviced a population of just 172,777 people. And in 2020, guess what? We have 20 fewer beds, so 917 beds, but our population was 620,000 people. So almost quadrupled in size and we've got 20 fewer beds. That's the number of beds that we're faced with in this region. And it illustrates what Natalie was talking about. And as far as staffing shortages are concerned, I think maybe this would be a really great opportunity to introduce our second speaker. And and we're going to hold our Q and A until the 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 end of the event. Uh, and hopefully Natalie will rejoin us at that point for questions and answers. Unless you'd rather stick around right now, Natalie.
You know what? I won't. Um, I'll come back. I'm gonna, I have to, I'm sorry. I have two events tonight. And I'm juggling. So I'm going to go off, do that for about 20 minutes and then come back again. Um, and and so I'll see you back. I'm really sorry about this, but I'll be back.
Not a problem. We'll see you back. And it's nice to have have you here. Now, I'd like to introduce our second speaker and that's Angela Preo Cannon. Angela's been a registered nurse for 32 years and has been a member of the Ontario Nurses Association for 20 years. She's currently the first Vice President of the ONA. Angela has worked in surgical thor- thoracic, head and neck clinics, urgent care and hemodialysis. She's a passionate advocate for her members and a stalwart defender of public healthcare. And we are so very honored to have you with us tonight, Angela. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Jim. That's very kind words. Thank you.
Um, thank you, everyone, for allowing me to speak tonight. And uh, thank you to Jim and to the Ontario Health Coalition for organizing this important town hall. Uh, as you heard, my name is Angela Preocannon and I am a very proud RN and the first vice president of the Ontario Nurses Association. ONA represents over sixty eight thousand nurses and healthcare professionals across the province, including eighteen thousand nursing students. I'm grateful to be here today with you to have the opportunity to share what is happening in our healthcare system now and why we know privatization is not the answer. At this point, anyone who's paying attention has heard it before. Our nurses and healthcare professionals have been stretched beyond the breaking point. We have been in crisis mode for almost three years now. At some point, it is not a crisis anymore, it is the new reality. And I think we all know this cannot be our new reality. We know from the New Canadian Health Institute for Health Information Data that Ontario is the worst in the country when it comes to RNs per capita. Across Canada, there are eight hundred and thirty RNs per one hundred thousand people. But in Ontario, we have just six hundred and sixty eight RNs for a hundred thousand people. That means just to be at the Canadian average, Ontario needs to hire almost twenty five thousand RNs immediately. What does a staffing shortage of this magnitude look like in practice? Well, it's become very commonplace for nurses to be kept at the hospital for hours after their shift is supposed to end. Because the next shift is short-staffed and it's not possible to safely transfer patient care. We have nurses working on maternity floors, for example, that need thirty five nurses on a shift, but the new normal is to have seventeen or eighteen. We have hospitals where there's more vacant RN positions than there are RNs on staff. In the Kitchener Waterloo area, we had a workload for nurses at the highest level has ever been due to the staffing shortages. There are over a hundred and forty vacancies for RNs and the working conditions make it impossible to fill them. We are hearing that some postings postings get taken down with zero applicants. This is just not sustainable. We know that nurses are resilient and resourceful. We always put patient care first and even these extremely difficult difficult times, our members find a way to provide the care that they know all patients need and deserve. But the cost of this burden is taking its toll. Early retirements are going up. New grads are rethinking their careers and leaving after only one or two years on the job. Nurses are leaving to work at private agencies where they can ensure they have a work-life balance. There's a very real cost to our healthcare system as these situations worsen. And now the full picture is coming into view. The Ford government is setting the stage to use this crisis to justify their privatization agenda. Ford took an understaffed system and made it so much worse by introducing Bill one twenty four, which caps the wages of many nurses and healthcare professionals violating our charter rights. And Ford is refusing to work with healthcare professionals to invest and implement a meaningful retention and recruitment plan, leaving our system severely understaffed with no relief in sight. Now the Ford government is using this crisis, which he has created, to push his plan to privatize their healthcare. And remember, the word innovative screams privatization. Across the country, Canadians pride themselves on our world-class, universal healthcare system. We believe that access to healthcare should be based on your needs and not your bank account. Nurses and healthcare workers are strong advocates for public, nonprofit healthcare because we know the devastating impacts of privatization. The most broken parts of our healthcare system are the ones that are already privatized, like long-term care and home care. Private healthcare will take away from public care by pulling resources and staff from public system. As nurses, we have already seen this as colleagues have left the public system to go work for private agencies. We can't blame nurses who make that choice. The agencies let nurses choose their own hours and can pay more because conveniently enough, they are not subject to Bill one twenty four. But there is a serious cost. Those agencies charge outrageous prices to public hospitals. They don't provide pensions, benefits or sick days for their nurses. This undermines nursing as a stable career and undermines our healthcare system by siphoning off precious dollars to line corporate pockets. This will impact access and quality care and it will hurt patients who can't afford to pay. And we just can't let this happen. Ontario's public healthcare system is not Doug Ford's to dismantle and sell off to his corporate buddies. Our public healthcare system have been built up over generations and belongs to all of us. That's why the Ontario Nurses Association is here with you tonight. And we will continue hand in hand with our allies to fight for the investments we need in our public healthcare system so that everyone gets the care they need and deserve. Together, we can stop Doug Ford's plan and mistracks. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Angela, that was uh very enlightening and I look sad to tell you the truth. I had no idea that there was that many vacancies in our region, although I knew we were under manned, but that's just staggering. Uh, so you know, with that, with with both Natalie's perspective and Angela's perspective on here, it's obvious that we do have a crisis. Despite the government's claims that there's no crisis, that they're getting tired of of people complaining about privatization and the crisis.
Can I see Jeff, Jim, can I play the clip for people?
Uh, I was just gonna ask, uh, if you would, thank you Natalie, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I just thought this was staggering. This is how the government is talking about um the crisis in the legislature. So this was actually shared by your MPP Catherine Fife. Um, and when you talked about Catherine, I was thinking about it, uh, Jim. Um, and uh, uh, this person who's speaking is the parliamentary assistant for the Minister of Health. So there's like ministers and then there's parliamentary assistants. And I don't know if you know, but Doug Ford named the most number of parliamentary assistants ever in Ontario's history in the summer, was it like? Uh, so and he also named the largest cabinet ever. So parliamentary assistants get a sixteen thousand dollar raise. Um, and then cabinet ministers, it's another, I've forgotten what it is, forty or fifty or something on top of that. So now like eighty five, above eighty five percent of his party are parliamentary assistants or cabinet ministers and then they froze MPP's wages. For the other parties, anyways, there you go. Uh, so, but here, she's the parliamentary assistant to the Minister of Health. And uh, this is kind of unbelievable, one moment, sorry. And sorry, I'm just gonna I just have to move my zoom controls over, here we go. So I'm turning on the sound and I'll have to start it again. Here we go, I'll play it twice so you, can I make it big? There we go, can you see that? Okay.
Madam Speaker, I get tired of listening to some of the complaining going on. I get tired of listening. I get tired of listening to people trying to make a crisis and make fear in the population out of time of pandemic even worse by using words and expressions like the worst crisis in generations. And, and, oh my God, the government is going to privatize, trying to scare. Madam Speaker, I get tired of listening to some of the complaining going on. I get tired of listening. I get tired of listening to people trying to make a crisis and make fear in the population out of time of pandemic even worse by using words and expressions like the worst crisis in generations. And, and, oh my God, the government is going to privatize, trying to scare.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thanks.
I mean, it just seems impossible to consider that there wouldn't be privatization of our system going on. When we have nine hundred and six independent health facilities, ninety eight percent of them are for-profit private clinics. We can't be, we are not naive enough here in the region of Waterloo to believe that a for private, a for-profit private clinic isn't going to find a wide variety of creative and innovative ways to extra charge and bill for medically unnecessary procedures and ensure that they've got, you know, fees for digital imaging, et cetera. So it's just going to be like non-stop additional costs across these independent health facilities. And as we double the funds going into independent health facilities at the same rate we're currently at, which would again be this hundred million dollars of of funds being transferred into independent health facilities. I can't imagine why anybody would think that we are not privatizing our system specifically when we're taking all of the services from the public hospitals that we have built over the last hundred years and transferring them to for-profit private clinics. It's just beggars the imagination that somebody could consider that not to be privatizing the system. Anyway, uh, at this point, before we get into the Q and A section full on and we'd like to hear your comments and questions for all the speakers. I'd like to just open it up for the media. There's some media that attended today, I I did see Louisa D'Amato here from uh The Record, who's an interesting and widely read reporter and I was wondering if anybody like Lisa had any questions for us, either for myself, Natalie or Angela.
Am I the only member of the media here?
Uh, you may not be, but you're the only name I actually recognize, Louisa, so thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you, this is enlightening and I probably you will ask to speak to some of your speakers um, one-on-one later, but I do have a question that's just kind of bubbling up in my head. Why do you think with things as bad as they are, and we all know how bad they are, and it's not a surprise and it was bad a year ago, just not this bad. Why do you think the Ford government so easily won reelection? When the public can see what's happening? This is an absolute mystery to me. And I, and I just wondered what some people think about that and I don't know if that's really within the the arena that you're, you know, the boundaries of what you want to discuss tonight and if it isn't, then don't answer me. Um, and I'll just try and reach uh some of some of you experts some uh independently later. But I'm I'm curious.
Okay, well, uh, I I'll I'll throw that over to our our speakers, they might have something to add to what I'm going to say. Which is, they didn't actually receive much of a mandate. With less than eighteen percent of the electorate voting for Mr. Ford and his government, that's not really an overwhelming number of people really voting from, so it really speaks to apathy. It could be a result of the COVID pandemic and people's, you know, desire to get back to something that's fun rather than maybe paying attention to elections. I'm not entirely sure why only eighteen percent of our electorate decided to vote this in this last election. So that's one answer, uh, maybe Natalie or Angela have have something else to add.
Is it okay if I jump in and then I'm gonna, I have to go and I'll be back again?
Sure.
I really think, I think you're right, Jim. One thing is that the the vote for the Conservatives actually went down, the vote for the NDP went down. Um, you know, the vote all around went down, but it wasn't that more people voted for Ford. It was that less people overall vote voted and that's how the votes split. I think that was really very sad, but I mean, having, doing this work through the pandemic, I watched and they did these daily media conferences. Um, and they would trot out a line, you know, they would trot out a line and it would rule the headlines for the entire day. And it was almost impossible um to get any kind of critical analysis of it. I think if people did hear any kind of critical analysis of what was going on, like I don't think people knew how to judge how we were doing in the pandemic. Obviously, we were doing better than the United States and people wanted that. And I thought Canadians really wanted to do well. I think we wanted to be proud of our country, all of us, you know, and that sort of colored things as well. The truth is, we did better than the United States, but holy cow, if that's our measure, we're in serious trouble, right? But um, so I think that was part of it and and that the power of these daily press conferences cannot be overstated, they control the agenda, uh, they frame the issues. It's almost impossible for uh anyone to get um, to even get into the story. You know, when Ford was like, we watched him do these press conferences when he cried and said after the military report that he was gonna bring penalties for long-term care and he was gonna, you know, bring back inspection. Every stone would, you know, no stone would be left unturned and there would be penalties and criminal charges. And absolutely none of it happened, like zero. They didn't even bring back the inspections that they had canceled, seriously. Yet that never got reported. They managed to run with their line with almost, it was almost impossible. Then in the lead into the election, I was really disappointed um at the lack of issues. Again, I think the opposition parties tried to make issues, both of them. You know, Stephen Del Duque had, you know, made that announcement about transit for a dollar. I thought that was like, what an amazing idea. One dollar public transit, what, how that would change our cityscapes and so on. It was a dream idea, you know? The NDP campaigned on long-term care and they pushed on healthcare, but it just never got reported. It was really sad to me, so um, there were no issues. Um, and be basically people stayed home in droves and that's not just here, though. I think the pandemic had an influence because in other places, they've had very, very low turnouts um in the pandemic. And I think people just, it's complex and people don't quite know how to weigh it sadly.
Right, thank you, Natalie. Louisa, just one other thing, uh, to really, you know, add a little bit of uh insult to the injury. The other thing that occurred is that right here in this region, for instance, in March, as I previously mentioned, I was reported, uh, uh, you know, talking about the video that CBC Television did with uh Christine Elliott announcing their plans to privatize. And they denied it. They categorically lied about this because at the very same time, they obviously had a plan. Otherwise, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have been transferring, according to FAO, uh, an additional thirteen point six million dollars into uh, these independent health facilities at precisely the same time they were denying that they had any plans. So, you know, perhaps people had some faith in government and they thought that there would be some sort of an honest broker, but it's turned out not to be that way. Okay, uh, any other questions from any other media persons that I do not recognize? You'd be happy to take your questions.
If I could just add something, Jim?
No, sorry Angela, yes.
That's okay, you know what, it's all right. It's just uh, when you were speaking about um, the minister, uh, the health minister, I I have to tell you that I was just at the Health Ministers Conference in Vancouver a few weeks ago. And I sat, how convenient, right next to Sylvia Jones during this uh meeting. And I asked her very respectfully. Please Minister, may I ask, with all due respect, why you keep denying the crisis? And honest to goodness, she said without batting an eye, what crisis? We are causing, we, the rest of us, are causing uh, a panic amongst the public. And for all the complaints that you bring forward as nurses, we have just as many compliments on what fantastic care people are getting. And my response to her was, nurses will never let any patient suffer. But certainly our government has let people of Ontario suffer. And so this is really something that is unbelievable. Uh, she only has a reel that she spins because she doesn't have any knowledge of healthcare whatsoever. And it is the, it is the reel that her boss is feeding her. So I go to Queen's Park uh pretty well three times a week for a question period, particularly if I know that there's going to be a healthcare issue that's going to be brought on the floor. And it is amazing to watch the volley of why aren't you doing something about this from the opposition and then turning around and having the majority say, huh, what crisis? Like that, that video was very demonstrative of what we see every day at Queen's Park and during question period. It's a very sad state of affairs for the people of Ontario.
Okay, thank you Angela, thank you, and thank you Louisa for the question. Uh, any other questions from the media? Okay, well then, let's move on to just uh, uh, questions uh from the participants. If anyone has a question that they'd like to pose, uh, and I'd love, I'd love it if you would direct it to Angela. But you can direct them to me as well, then uh, and Natalie, when she returns, then uh, we'd like to sally forth, so if you've got a question, please just uh raise your hand and I see one from Barb on, Barb. Go ahead, Barb.
Yep, hi everybody, um, I was listening to the um Craig Norris um episode yesterday on CBC Morning Edition. And he had, I think, a doctor on from the OMA, the Ontario Medical Association, and they were talking about their five-point plan. And um, I'm gonna put that link, that video link or the uh audio link in the chat. And at the three-minute mark is where she starts to talk about these independent health facilities. And I haven't been able to listen to you both and to hear the clip again, but as I was laying in bed yesterday, I almost thought she said privatization but not profit. So now I'm wondering, um, with what you were saying about how they were. So now I'm wondering, um, with what you were saying about how they were. You know, introduced, long, introducing long-term care and also um. Home care and how we've seen how that definitely turns into for-profit. Um, what is, my question is, what can we do to? Um. Put some um, alternate. Facts against what they might be saying from the OMA. And I'll just add the clip in if anyone wants to listen.
Okay, fine. Thank you. So, you know, what can we say to refute this idea that you could have a private? Independent health facility, a private for-profit independent health facility that that's not. Charging any uh, additional fees for profit, correct? Okay. Uh, Angela, do you want to take that? Cause I, I've got a quick reaction to that.
Well, I would agree with the, you know, this is. Unprecedented, the way that they're speaking. I mean, they, again, when I say, when I hear the word innovative. It, it is absolutely their code word for privatization. And how are they going to do? Uh, do this. They're going to suck all of our resources of our um, human health resources into the private system. This is just. Something that is unbelievable. And I see the comment about, you know, uh, long-term care. My care is the chairman of, of um. One of the long-term care facilities. His wife also owns a private nursing agency. How convenient.
Mm-hmm. Well, I totally understand that that connection. It seems incredibly fair to me. But. One of the points I'd like to make about these independent health facilities is that. We don't just pay through the government, through OHIP. We don't just pay a professional fee. For every procedure delivered in an independent health facility. We also pay what's called a facility fee to these independent health facilities. And as I mentioned, uh, it's difficult to get uh, some of this information, but we've done our research. And the, the most recent information we got is going back to twenty fourteen. So it's about eight years ago. And then eight years ago, the facility fees that were transferred. From the public purse to these for-profit private clinics was four hundred and thirty-four million dollars. So that's to assist these independent health facilities with staffing, maintenance, administration. And so forth, technology. Uh, the professional fees at the same time that went into these independent health facilities was a hundred and ninety-eight million. So. Less than half. So there's a considerable amount of financial transfer of public wealth. To private for-profit facilities. That in itself should give you some pause. To understand why this is so damaging to our public healthcare system. And then there's the overt. Overcharging and double charging that, that we have seen with these for-profit uh, private clinics. We've done our own surveys, surveys over the years where we called. For-profit private clinics all across the country, including here in Ontario. And we're able to determine just over the phone. What the additional fees would be and how much it would cost, even though these additional fees are illegal, they are still continued to be charged. And then, of course, the more creative ways of charging additional fees. And that is, you can charge a fee for not the procedure that's covered by OHIP. But perhaps the imaging technology that you use. Or you could say, uh, you know, and, and, and that, that happens all the time in ophthalmology. Or you could say, uh, if you were going to get a cataract surgery, we could. You know, you could get the cataract surgery done at the hospital, but we don't do that in our independent health facility. We do digital surgery. And consequently, that's going to cost you today five thousand additional dollars out of your pocket. So there's a variety of creative ways that they can find to charge you for medically unnecessary procedures. Measurement tests. New and improved technologies that they like to use. And if you think about it, if you're making five thousand dollars every procedure, every time you do a cataract. And you're making five thousand dollars, it doesn't take very long before you're making a half a million dollars, right? So. It's an incredibly profitable scenario and, and, and for us to think. That when all of our surgeries. Are meant, most of our surgeries and diagnostics are completely transferred out of the public hospitals into these independent health facilities. And think that there won't be any creative, innovative new ways to double charges or extra charges. Make us pay the way the Americans pay for their healthcare. And I think. You know, that's just a non-starter. So Beth has been uh, waiting for a moment or two. So Beth, uh, let's hear your question, please.
It, it's, it's actually Larry. My wife and I are here together.
Okay, Larry.
So if my voice is deeper than you're expecting, then what? Yeah, um, I wanted to ask what you thought of, like, if we could somehow pressure one of the. Major parties to make a commitment to the next election to. To start pulling back the privatization, to start building up the public. Healthcare again in Ontario. Do you think that would be the type of policy that would actually? Be a winner with the public in Ontario and might bring out the vote?
Yes, I do. I absolutely do. And Angela, feel free to jump in after I finish because. Public healthcare is a nonpartisan issue. Conservatives, liberals, Green Party members, NDP and other people all support our public healthcare system. All of the parties. Believe, all the, all the people who support these parties believe in public healthcare. It's just. What's happening with our government is a little bit different. We did reach out to all of the different political parties. You know, and lead up to the election. And what we found from the Liberals and the NDP in particular, and the Green Party in particular. Those three were very completely supportive of expanding, stopping the cuts in public healthcare. And delivering a new and, and, and enhanced public healthcare system.
What I'd like to add to that is uh, this morning, actually Natalie and I were both at Queens Park for a. Uh, press conference with um, MPP Frans Jelena, who is the health critic. And she was tabling a private members bill. Um, so. Bill is called Healthcare is Not For Sale Act. And so this is um, an attempt to stop. The over. Payment fees by physicians and independent health facilities. So they are tabling this at the government right now. And I mean, certainly, I don't anticipate the opposition um. Moving forward with this, but she did do some health forms in her communities where she was asked to attend. And she tells the story of how she asked anyone in the audience that was there to come to her if they had any. Uh, had ever been charged extra for any procedures. She had a hundred and forty people line up. At one of the events. And each person was able to provide her with an actual document. Between a hundred and fifty and five thousand dollars they spent. Over and above the treatment that they were having. So, please stay tuned.
Shocking, but not surprising. Thank you, Larry, for the question. Luisa, I see you've got your hand up. Is that a new hand? Okay. We'll go to Lisa, then David, Marilyn, and then back to Barb, and then to our letter, and then finally to Barb. And then I think at that point. We may have matched out our Q and A session. So Luisa, go ahead.
Yeah, and uh. I'm sorry to, to hug the microphone, but I realize that I'm actually working on a story right now. About the people who are being taken to long-term care homes against their will, who are in hospitals now. And I interviewed Catherine Fife about it. Um, and she talked about, she had this angle that I was thinking about as you were talking, which is that. The hot, you know, being moved to a long-term care home and they're often the places where there are spaces. Are the worst homes because they are private homes and they are existing for profit. And, and so that kind of fits in with what you're talking about. But what I was wondering is. Are there any, do we know about any people locally? In local hospitals where this has happened? Like, I know that they said twenty-four hundred people have been moved into long-term care homes out of hospitals. Under the threat of having to pay four hundred dollars a day. I'm wondering if, if this is, if we know that it's happened here as well.
Well, of course, it's quite a new uh, piece of legislation that's come forth. Now they're charging four hundred dollars per day. For people who have refused to move. So quite frankly, given the novelty of that, that legislation. Not to mention how disagreeable it is. Uh, we have just started to ask, in fact, we were going to do this as part of our game plan tonight. Ask people if they have. Any of those personal stories, if they could send them to us at the Ontario Health Coalition or Waterloo Region Health Coalition. Again, you can contact us at WaterlooRegionHealthCoalition@gmail.com. And we'll get, and we'll get, we'll have an opportunity to collect that, that, those stories. And. If we do get those uh, directly from the public, we'll be sure to uh, share that with you, Luisa. Thank you for that question. Now, uh, David Bryant has a question. David?
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, so my name is Dave Bryant. I'm a vice president of local QP five-one-nine-one, representing our paramedics in one of the region. Uh, I just want to start by answering or making a suggestion to Luisa. Uh, I would reach out to the non-urgent patient transfer companies. They're all private. Uh, they handle UK trade from the hospitals. Uh, that might give you better insight into the question that was asked. Uh, my next question is for Angela. Uh, locally, we've been um, pretty aggressive on Twitter with our campaign towards the Ontario PC party. We have generated a lot of media attention locally, especially. There's going to be another article coming out in a lot of your record uh, the next couple of days. Uh, we've also banded together with OPSU, other paramedic unions. And I'm just wondering where Ona's stance is on a joint campaign and public awareness? And what your thoughts are on what we can do to take action? Uh, I feel like, I feel like awareness has kind of hit a standstill. Based on my perspective. And I'd just like to know what your thoughts are on actually taking some sort of action at this point. Thank you.
Thanks for the question, David. I really appreciate it. Uh, I will tell you that tomorrow I'm actually participating in a five-union um. Uh, joint effort um, at Queens Park. We're doing a um, press release tomorrow. Um, with um, some plans on how to work together to work against the government. So that will be coming out tomorrow as a media release and you'll see that it's with O2, SEIU, OPSU. ONA and Uniform. Um, all working in the healthcare sector. So. Please stay tuned and see what um, what'll be coming from that. Um, there is a concerted effort and there is a strategic um, strategy, like the planning. That's going on about what we're going to move forward with, including some kind of public action. So the groups are ONA. OPSU. O2, the QP Division, SEIU. And Uniform. And so um. This is, is really. Starting a movement, we hope. To be able to, to garner some more public support. Public. Is really the key. In trying to move our, our government. And the public is now starting to become a little more aware. But it is, it is um, still a challenge. And we try very hard from our perspective. From the Ontario Nurses Association, we have tried different media campaigns, particularly around uh, reaching out to your MPPs. And uh, letter-writing campaigns, um, sending information right to, direct to the premier's office. Uh, if you go on the Ontario Nurses Association website, there are links there that you can go to as the public to see. Um, Bill one twenty-four, for instance, and saving public healthcare, those kind of things that have those letter campaigns. That are just a click and add some information and off it goes. For you, so. Um, please stay tuned. We're, we're hopeful that we're going to be able to do something strategic.
Thank you, David, and thank you for that answer, Angela. Now to Marilyn Hay, the chair of the Local Council of Canadians.
Thanks, uh, thanks, Jim. Um, I, I'm trying not to do a speech here, but first of all. I hope that we can have a speaking note from both of our speakers because it's fabulous, fabulous information. And I'm so grateful for what they've shared tonight. Uh, I don't think we can give these people another four years. We've got to stop them now. Key questions, like, why are we paying for admin, staffing, equipment and space? Costs out of tax dollars when they just get to rake in all the profit when we pay all the overhead. Um, in terms of transferring LTC people uh, around the province, part of that is because the contracts the province signs. Guarantees a certain percentage of full beds. And they'll pay for those beds where they'll pull or not in the for-profit private sector. It's nuts. Uh. On top of all of this, tonight we're talking about healthcare. But they're attacking us, the province, our provincial government is attacking. The people of Ontario and the local governments of Ontario across the board. Whether it's in our healthcare, whether it's our education, where teachers were held be. Below cost of living at the same time that classrooms were increased, whether it's Bill twenty-three. Where they're refusing to accept our local planning, want to do more urban sprawl and charge taxpayers of billions more in property taxes. To pay for the extra sewer and other kinds of infrastructure costs. This is a rogue government. It has no legitimacy with eighteen percent of the vote. They may have. A technical majority, but they certainly have no mandate. So I wonder, and I pose the questions, what role do legal actions or injunctions have through all of this? And how do we organize to do that and to support that? What role do the feds have? Given the very poor healthcare investment compared to the rest of Canada, let alone the rest of the world, while billions are hoarded. And especially when things like the, the federal support to disabled is raked back. By this. Infinitely cruel, cruel provincial government. They use slogans like. It's your OHIP card being charged, not your credit card. But we all know that that's hollow because we get far less care. For the tax dollars that we expend. And we have to somehow. Get to those mainstream media, maybe canceling subscriptions until they start. Giving more balanced reporting. I don't know. But at some point, we have to. Mobilize, much like Alberta did, and say enough already. It's, and it's not just healthcare. They're destroying our way of life in Ontario.
Okay, understood. Just far too much for me to unpack in that uh. Statement or so, and but all of them are incredibly salient components. To this whole conversation. Uh, I think we're gonna have to take that up a little bit more fully at some other meetings, but. Uh, Marilyn, I, I'll be speaking about our action plan in a moment or two. As, as how we go forward. So there may be a couple of answers in there for you about what we're planning to do. Uh, I'll, I'll go over to our letter and then our last question will be uh, from Barb Bog. So our letter, you're, you're, you're up.
Yeah, I think I'm following up on something Marilyn said, and I wondered if there's any legal or other kind of challenges to user fees or privatization when. You know, some of those things go against the Canada Health Act.
Yeah, that's, it's a kind of a. The Canada Health Act really talks about the administration of our public healthcare system. So, you know, we have the basic tenants of our administration of public healthcare in Ontario, which have to, have to be uh, uh. Consistent with the Canada Health Act. But the actual delivery of our healthcare. How it's done. Here, not administered, house-delivered, is the purview of the provinces. And so Mr. Ford's concept about delivering healthcare. Uh, to the people of Ontario is really his uh, mandate. To pursue, just as it is with all provincial premiers. So there's very little capability from, from the current perspective between the federal government. And the provincial delivery of healthcare in Ontario. So it's very sad to see, but we have actually tried to speak with the uh, federal MPs about the delivery of our healthcare in Ontario and. Uh, they are unwilling to really support that kind of change, given the distinction between provincial governance and federal governance. Sorry, that's not a very good answer for you, but there should be fee, uh, there should be some criminal action. I agree. And maybe we'll get there. Barb, last question from you.
Okay, thanks. Um, I just wanted to correlate this story to what we're talking about with the um, doctors going into their clinics, making new clinics. Um, this is a possibility of what could happen, not only taking doctors and nurses out of our public healthcare system, so we're left with less. Um, are, one of our members brought to my attention that um, there's a doctor in Guelph, Dr. Marie Zadzalik. Um, and she's sounding the alarm um, that in Guelph, we only have one dermatologist. Uh, a dermatologist is someone that I've gone to for a mall to have examined to see if it was cancers. My sister couldn't go to see the only doctor that will accept OHIP. People because he's full for up to a year. She's had to go to Kitchener to. She's had to go to Kitchener to a um plastic surgeon, and she's on a big waitlist for that. So in Guelph, there's only one dermatologist that will accept Ohip patients. All the other der- dermatologists, um, according to Dr. Maria Sajlik says. Oh, sorry, we don't take Ohip um covered patients. That will be thirteen thousand dollars, please. So what is stopping? So Ford says that we can go and we don't need a credit card. We can go. Um, never mind the extra fees they're charging, that that would be optional, but that you can go with your Ohip cover, covered card. What when, what happens when the doctors start saying we don't cover Ohip, Ohip um covered patients anymore? Sorry, that's going to be twenty thousand dollars, and you're left with less even accepting. They're, they're saying that there's a guarantee that that doctor's going to take your Ohip card. I'm saying there's not a guarantee. We only have one person in Guelph to check dermatologist, which could um be cancer issues. And he can't even accept people because he's so booked, and people are having to go to Toronto to clinics. Um, for for this kind of thing. So I'm trying to correlate that between what's going on with Guelph and dermatology. To what might happen with doctors saying we don't take Ohip anymore. So that's, that's a big thing that just came up with me, and I'm uh just wanted to let.
Uh, I mean, it sounds very familiar to what happens at the Sholdice Clinic. Who does, that's a clinic in Toronto that does hips and knees. So they take patients uh from the public system and they do them there for a fee. But you have to understand that that clinic has a very good reputation because they only take the very lightest types of patients. The healthiest individuals, the strongest patients possible. The kind of patients who are not going to present them with any kind of additional, uh, you know, chronic illnesses or aren't overweight. Potentially don't have diabetes, et cetera. So they're very selective in the kinds of patients that they would take. And consequently, you know, if you don't meet their criteria for patient, uh, you know, a profile. And you're just, you're not not going to be accepted. So it's. You know, it is shocking that there's no, there's only one dermatologist in all of the, the district of Guelph. And and surrounding areas, and and maybe that's something that we're going to have to really pay more attention to. Angela, do you have any comments on that?
Sholdice has been around for forty years, unfortunately, has run as a private clinic ever since it was inception. They do um. Uh, hernias, that's their specialty, hernias. And um you're absolutely correct that uh it is. The the more complex patients are what are going into the public system because it's less profitable. So the heavier loads, the more acute patients are going there. And one of the things that we. Hesitate to remember, um, the government hesitates to remember is that if there's a complication. Those patients that are in private clinics overnight end up in the hospital anyway. So it further burdens the system that they don't need to have this private system. Uh, a hernia repair is about twenty-six hundred dollars. Ohip charged at Sholdice, it's twelve thousand dollars. So those are the the things that really are not out there. People don't understand what is happening to our system.
And so with that, let's just talk about that, because that's the whole real reason why we're here tonight. Because we want to stop this level of uh creeping American-style healthcare in Ontario and in Canada. Why, really? Because as Ontario goes, the rest of the provinces may follow. So this is an incredibly important issue for us, and we have to mobilize basically a small army to sort of fight this. And we've got a variety of different plans that we're going to uh go forward with in order to stop this creeping price privatization. That really only affects people when they need their healthcare. If they're going, you know, going throughout their day-to-day, uh, you know, without any, you know, hernia issues or. Uh, you know, uh, cataract problems, then they they don't really see that. Uh, until you know it's too late. And so we've got to save our hospitals before it is too late. And one of the strategies that we have to save our hospitals is we're going to try and mobilize. A million defenders of public healthcare. And how we're going to do that is we're going to ask people, like everyone who's attending the town hall tonight. To become involved as a public healthcare defender. And I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Britt Hancock, from the Guelph District uh uh Health Coalition. And Britt's going to share her screen and show you where you would go to become a public healthcare defender, right?
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm just going to show you, if you're able to see the screen now, can someone confirm?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Okay, so you're just going to go to www.ontariohealthcoalition.ca. And we've made it really simple um for everyone to sign up to be a Medicare defender. Um, you're just going to follow this line here, um, put in your name, uh, your last name, your street address. City, postal code, uh, phone number, and email. Um, and then just say if you want to stay connected. I just want to confirm that this information's not going anywhere. Um, it's just for us to collect the amount of people that are in support of these actions. Um, so, and then at the bottom, you'll see there's a counter. We're at seventy-four, and we honestly do think we can get to a million dollars to put pressure on the four government to understand. That there are this many people that are interested in this cause. Um, so I've added my name to the list, um, and I really encourage everyone before this meeting ends even. Um, it only takes a minute to sign on and uh put in your information. If you are on Facebook or Twitter, you can also share it. Encourage your friends, your family, anyone else. Um, just to, so other people realize just, just how horrible this case is. Um, I think it's really important for people to know when nurses, doctors, um. Uh, paramedic uh personnel, uh. The disabled, people with multiple health issues, the elderly, they're the people that are saying that this is an issue. Um, those are the people you need to listen to when they're, they're calling out that it's a crisis. So once you fill out this uh. Um, this, this page here, we'll send you some more information on how you can help. And so the three other action items are that you can print. I don't know if it's actually right, if you can directly print it from here. Uh, no, we'll send it to you, um, and you'll be able to print the pamphlet and leaflets. That you can spread out your, your workplaces. Um, community groups, give to your friends and family. Um, we also have some surveys that you can fill out. Explain that if you've ever been overcharged. Um, patient uh and individuals that work in the healthcare facilities. Um, your opinion's really important to share so that other people know what's going on. Um, and the more, more evidence we gather, the the stronger our case and uh push will be. And then lastly is promoting and attending uh local protests or marches. Um, we're not exactly sure what all the activities are going to be, when and where, but we would like to hold something in the Waterloo region. I know as the Guelph Coalition Chair, um, a lot of our members are excited to to come forth and and to support you. Um, but this really needs to be a community-based action. Um, people from all different walks of life and and to show that that we won't stand for this. Um, I I think I I answered all the. The points of the, the um. Our upcoming project, but if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to uh answer them.
Any questions for Britt on this? Okay, uh.
I, I.
I see one from Andrew.
Hi, Britt. What was that? What was that website, Britt?
Yep, I'll put it in the, in the chat as well, but it's www.ontariohealthcoalition. Dot C, okay.
You can find us by Googling Ontario Health Coalition.
Yeah, okay, great. Yeah, yeah. So when it comes to protest, yeah, just call me.
We, we don't have the resources to call everybody.
So I'm able to kind of give you some ideas on how to organize it.
Okay, okay. Well, you know, we don't have a lot of resources here at the Waterloo Region Health Coalition to be calling everybody all the time. But we would invite you to come to our Waterloo Region Health Coalition uh monthly meetings. We'll have one second Monday of December as as we do typically. And uh if you can't, just send me an email if you'd like me to speak to you directly. Uh, quite frankly, we've got a couple of other, uh, you know, action items that we're going to go through uh and. But I'll just transfer this question over to Andrew. Andrew?
Hi, uh, Andrew Zader here. Uh, I'm a cancer patient. I really appreciate all of the work that the medical community here does. Uh, more than anybody can imagine. I have a couple of important points. One is, if you remember the four oh seven, uh, once you privatize something, it is impossible to go back. Because all of the companies that have vested interests, the multinationals, they will sue you if you try and get rid of them after you've brought them in. The second thing is you can't fight with only the elderly and the people who immediately and always need the healthcare. You have to consider the fact that we, partially probably because of the hockey game, we don't have any youth here. And the youth can't afford the kind of prices that will be charged. Um, the third thing is that uh private nonprofit is an oxymoron. When we have to be, we have to pound that into the public mind, that private and nonprofit are are, they're incompatible. We currently have medical imaging being controlled offshore. That was sent to a a US company, and we already pay to access our own medical images in Ontario. So we have to, we have to be proactive on this. We can't wait for the next Parliament in in Queen's Park to reverse something. Because by then, it'll be wedged in with legal documents and companies will have invested money.
Understood, and I couldn't agree with you more, Andrew. That's precisely what we're doing. We're not waiting. We're proceeding with the fight back. Right now, we are really trying to establish the Save Our Hospitals campaign. And so one of the things that we'll be doing is sending out some short videos and internet shareables. And we would implore everyone to resend them out to all of their, all of your networks to try to get the message out. The overwhelming perspective on this part of the plan is to provide our messaging. That will overwhelm Ford's messaging, that we have our counterbalance when it comes to messaging. So we'll be sending those out very soon. And we'd also like to ask that all of the leaders from from different groups, from the ONA to Barb and Britt's group. And wealth to everybody else on on the call today, the Unifor people, all the union people, the Council of Canadians, the climate groups. That support healthcare as we support climate change, the political parties that are, that are, that are supportive. We would like them to act as an echo chamber to send our information out more fully as well. And again, we're going to have more press conferences to try to reach the media generally. But we're also going to have some demonstrations that can't be ignored.
Or has backed down because of those sorts of things.
Planning a large march in in December. That's what we hope. So in December, we'll have a march. From Waterloo Town Square to Grand River Hospital. We're picking that because CTV News is right across the street. We should get some profile there. We're also planning a series of bridge of programs. So we'll be having banners and uh and uh, you know, protests on various bridges across the region. So that we can actually create, create some additional awareness. So these are the types of activities along with the defenders of 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 healthcare, of public healthcare, that we can help. To add uh many voices to uh what we're trying to do here to get the message out, number one, that our public hospitals are. You know, really very much at risk, like they've never been before. This is absolutely critical. If we do nothing now, we will lose our public hospitals and public, and what's left of public healthcare. And so, you know, we need groups like Joe's group uh at the OSSTF to help us. Uh, and David's, or Brian's group with the Parameds to help us. Everyone is in this fight. And so I would implore you all to uh come to our meetings and to participate when I send you. Uh, the information via the email uh to, you know, not just read it. But we need you to send it out and at least talk to everybody that you can talk to. And if you're not, you know, one of those people that are very technically savvy, you know, feel good about Zoom calls or, you know, you know. Uh, Twitter accounts, et cetera, and you want to create a leaflet. Britt's just showing you where you would get the leaflets to, that you can pass out to your friends and family and ask them to pass it out. So this is very much a growth mindset in terms of messaging. You know, from a small community outbound. And and let's, let's not fool ourselves. You know, we're doing this not just here in Waterloo Region, but we're doing it all across the province. And so we really want everybody to participate with what we're doing here locally. And also to think about saving our hospitals. Now with that, it's eight twenty-seven. I think we've been at this for quite a while now. I think unless there's any urgent questions from anyone. Because I see a couple of hands up there, but I don't know if they're old or new. I'll take one last question, and that's from Joe. And after that question, then we'll move ahead. Joe Armutip from the OSSTF. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, uh, Jim and the group tonight. My question is about sending uh out the message. In relation to uh this uh program, uh, this activity is being videotaped. Jim, would you be kind enough to send out the link to the YouTube video? Is this going to be posted on YouTube, or will it be accessible to share with others?
I believe this will be posted, Joe, on the Ontario Health Coalition's website. That's the same website we can go to sign up as a public healthcare defender, and if not, we'll get it to you. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate your attendance tonight. Thank you, Angela, for your words. And your inspiration in terms of helping us to continue the fight. And to Britt and Barb from Guelph and everyone who's in attendance this evening. Thank you very much. Good night.
Sorry, and just to answer Joe's uh question, we're actually going to be posting on the Waterloo um Facebook group. Um, and the Ontario Health Coalition Facebook group.
Well, typically we post on both, but if that's what we're doing, thank you, Britt, for that, for that clarity. So you'll get it right at our Waterloo Region Health Coalition Facebook site. Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
Good night.